Good evening, everybody. Welcome to City of Milton. I'm glad you're here. Before we get started, I'd like to ask Jason Howard, who is the chaplain for our City of Milton Police and Fire, to lead us in invocation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We bow our heads. And heavenly fathers, we begin the first council for a new year and a new decade. I pray that we're filled with grateful hearts for all that we've seen and experienced this past year, both the good along with the hard things, that have reminded us how much we need you along with our community every single day. I pray that you fill us with anticipation and hope for this new year and all the potential that it holds. And I pray that as Mayor Lockwood, this council, and all of our city leaders look at what decisions are in front of them today, that they also keep in mind how quickly time passes, and that what we do each and every day has the potential to move mountains and create lasting change in the years and the decades to come, renewing us a resiliency and a steadfastness to lead humbly, with wisdom, and from a place of truth and integrity, and help each person gathered tonight listen and speak out of a sense of what is best to help our city, the best city in Georgia, to grow and thrive. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jason. Again, welcome tonight. We appreciate you being here. Got some special guests and folks here. Also, I want to welcome Paul Moore here for his first meeting, his new council member.
Thanks, Joe.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, January 6, 2020, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment card to our clerk, to my right, as soon as possible, and the yellow comment cards are back to my left in the back. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls that agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more public comment cards will be accepted. Now, we will now administer the oath, beginning with Councilmember Carol Cookerly, and also want to recognize our Chief Municipal Judge, Brian Hansford, here tonight, who will administer the oath to Carol. Carol, if you want to step down there and raise your right hand. You know, and excuse me for one second, I also need to have Paul and Rick, we're swearing you guys in, so we'll have you guys step up at the same time, too.
Okay.
You can do it individually, but at least be ready to do that, it'll be under the same item.
Aye, Carol Cookerly, do solemnly swear and affirm.
Aye, Carol Cookerly, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
Councilmember of this city.
Councilmember of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations for a second time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Carol, and Rick, and Paul, if I could ask, if you guys could stay down there, then we'll get a picture after everybody's sworn in.
It's nice to see you again.
Good to see you, too, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. Raise your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And then after you. Aye, Rick Morick, do solemnly swear and affirm.
Aye, Rick Morick, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of councilmember of this city.
Of councilmember of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations again, Council.
Thank you.
Yes, exactly, Paul, if you want to raise your right hand. Aye, Paul Moore, do solemnly swear and affirm.
Aye, Paul Moore, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
Councilmember of this city.
Councilmember of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And condolences.
We can do a few, we can do both. They listen to judges. Okay. I thought she did. No? Thank you, do we want any different? No. We're just going to let Joe get up.
Test the weight limit of this.
Those are some red shoes.
It's a warning, you can see me coming if you don't want to talk to me. Thank you all.
I just want to thank assistant councilmembers, assistant councilmembers that have just sworn in, and also Paul for stepping up. Sincerely appreciate it.
Okay, if the, our city clerk could please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll be happy to call roll for the January 6, 2020, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance, to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating that you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Sudi, if you would please call the next item.
Our next item is election of the mayor pro tem.
Okay, and I will open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint and nominate Councilmember Peyton Jameson to the position of mayor pro tem for the calendar year of 2020.
I second that.
Okay. I've got a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cookerly nominating Councilmember Jameson as mayor pro tem. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, I think, Councilmember Jameson, if you'll meet me down there. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
Mayor pro tem of the city.
Mayor pro tem of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, if we could move on to the approval of the agenda.
This item is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 20001.
Okay, I would like to recommend that we move items one, number one through number six, under new business, which are nominations for the city boards and committees, to, after the approval of the meeting and agenda. Anything else we have? Okay, I'll open up for a motion. On the agenda?
Mayor, I move to accept the meeting agenda as read and as amended by you.
Second. I have a motion for approval as read from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, so, Sudi, since we moved new business items, one through six, to directly after this, if you'd call the first item.
First item is consideration of a resolution, appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals by appointing a board member for District One Post Two, District Two Post Two, and District Three Post Two, and at large. This is agenda item number 20008, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, tonight I would like to appoint Zach Middlebrooks for my Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm sorry, actually, and I think we've got that mixed up on, Zach Middlebrooks for my planning commission member. So, do I need to do Board of Zoning Appeals? No, that's reversed, but, so, is it okay to do, we'll just do the, do we just need to change to plan a commission? And Zach Middlebrooks, okay. Zach's a graduate at Auburn University with a degree in building construction. He's lived in Milton for 17 years. His wife Melissa, they have two boys, Austin and the freshman at Cambridge, and Logan is at Hopewell Middle. He's worked with Mark Law with Milton's First Tree Committee. He was involved with the North, merging the North Point Pediatrics Jog for a Cause into the city as part of the Milton's mayor run, back in 2009, being the inaugural run. His family, Zach and his family are part of the Adopta Road along Westbrook Road where they live, and he's been coaching youth baseball for the past seven years. He was on the Hopewell Youth Association Board and currently on the Cambridge Feeder Board, and also he was on our Parks and Rec Board at one point. So, I would like to nominate Zach Middlebrooks on, for my planning commission member. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Zach Middlebrooks to the BZA as your appointee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Cookerly. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, so, next, Sudi, would be.
Next, we're looking at a motion for Hodge Patel. Do we want to keep with the BZA?
You know, we can either one, it's, like I said, it was reversed on here, so, so if we, I don't know that it matters.
Okay, so, Councilmember Cookerly would be your nomination for the BZA.
Okay. Okay, who would you nominate for BZA?
Hodge Patel.
Okay, all right.
Excuse me, I want to say that more clearly, Hodge Patel.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, we'll open that up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Councilmember Cookerly's appointee, Hodge Patel, to the BZA.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Morick for Hodge Patel, for Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, if we'll move to our next Board of Zoning Appeals.
And it looks like Councilmember Paul Moore is making a nomination.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Brenda Hampstead for the position of Board of Zoning Appeals. Brenda's a 16-year resident of Milton, she has served on this committee for several years and has done a terrific job. She and her husband, Julian, are in the real estate industry and has served us well, and would be a valuable member of the board.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Brenda Hampstead for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion from Councilmember Morick, and I believe the second was Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, who do we have next?
I think that's it for the BZA.
Okay. Don Kurt.
Don Kurt. Rick.
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Don Kurt for another term. Don is a 22-year resident of Milton slash North Fulton County, and again, I'd like to reappoint him, thank him for his service the past four years.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Zach Middlebrooks to the BZA as your appointee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Cookerly. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, so, next, Sudi, would be.
Next, we're looking at a motion for Hodge Patel. Do we want to keep with the BZA?
You know, we can either one, it's, like I said, it was reversed on here, so, so if we, I don't know that it matters.
Okay, so, Councilmember Cookerly would be your nomination for the BZA.
Okay. Okay, who would you nominate for BZA?
Hodge Patel.
Okay, all right.
Excuse me, I want to say that more clearly, Hodge Patel.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, we'll open that up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Councilmember Cookerly's appointee, Hodge Patel, to the BZA.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Morick for Hodge Patel, for Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, if we'll move to our next Board of Zoning Appeals.
And it looks like Councilmember Paul Moore is making a nomination.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Brenda Hampstead for the position of Board of Zoning Appeals. Brenda's a 16-year resident of Milton, she has served on this committee for several years and has done a terrific job. She and her husband, Julian, are in the real estate industry and has served us well, and would be a valuable member of the board.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Brenda Hampstead for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion from Councilmember Morick, and I believe the second was Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, who do we have next?
I think that's it for the BZA.
Okay. Don Kurt.
Don Kurt. Rick.
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Don Kurt for another term. Don is a 22-year resident of Milton slash North Fulton County, and again, I'd like to reappoint him, thank him for his service the past four years.
Okay, do I have a motion for Mr. Kurt?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointee, the appointment of Don Kurt as Rick Morick's appointee to the BZA.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, we move on to.
Did you want to go in and swear the board in?
We can, we can.
Okay, great.
We'll do all the BZA members, I don't believe, my appointee's not here, but everybody that's here, if they want to step forward, then we'll swear them in. All right, if you guys would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
As a member of.
As a member of.
The Board of Zoning Appeals.
The Board of Zoning Appeals.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
That I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
All right, if you guys would step forward. Okay.
Next is consideration of resolution, appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Design Review Board by appointing a board member for District One Post Two, District Two Post Two, and District Three Post Two, agenda item number 20009. And we'd start with Councilmember Cookerly.
Okay, so before I give my nomination for the DRB, I would just like to backstep for a second and say, because I did not know I was going first, and I haven't done this before, I didn't have an opportunity to say really nice things about Hodge Patel. So, I would like to note, his long service to the city, is representative on BZA, and I was lucky enough to acquire him and work with him, and he's done a great job for the city, and he is certainly very diligent in the execution of those duties, so, thank you. So, now, on to my nominee for the DRB. You may not know him by face, but everybody has seen a sign, it's Reed Casey. He's a Realtor in town, and he has also served the city really well, long before I became active with the city. So, Reed, I'd like to nominate you for the DRB.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Reed Casey to the DRB.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Okay, who do we have next?
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Tim Bryant to my post for the Design Review Board. Tim has served us on the Design Review Board. He's an architect, but he's served for nine years, and I appreciate his willingness to sign up for another four years.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to accept the appointment of Tim Bryant as Rick Morick's candidate for the DRB.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And next is Councilmember Paul Moore.
I'd like to nominate Lee Collins, my representative on the Design Review Board. Lee and his wife Melanie have three boys, are raising here in Milton. They've been here for three years, live on the north end of Milton. They were residents of Alpharetta for 10 years before, so they've been longtime members of this community and surrounding community. They're in the real estate community and do a terrific job of representing Milton to the, both the buying community coming in, the selling community leaving us, and I know he will do a terrific job with his architectural eye, and he will serve us well on the board.
Okay, do we have, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the appointment of Lee Collins to the DRB.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember, from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So, Sudi, would you like us to swear in the DRB members? So, if those three DRB members, if they're here, please come up. All right, if you guys will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully, that I will faithfully perform the duties as a member of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties as a member of.
The Design Review Board.
The Design Review Board.
Of this city.
Of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the. as well as the Constitution
As well as the Constitution
and the laws of the state of Georgia
And the laws of the state of Georgia
and the United States of America
And the United States of America.
Thank you. Okay, Suti, if you would please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of resolution, appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Equestrian Committee by appointing a board member for District One, Post Two, District Two, Post Two, and District Three, Post Two. Agenda item number 20010. And we'll begin with Councilmember Cokerly.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of serving on the Equestrian Committee with Susan Day, and I am delighted that as I've gotten on the council, that she has agreed to serve, and she will serve another term. So Susan, I nominate you to be my representative on the Equestrian Committee. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Susan Day to the Equestrian Committee on behalf of Carol Cokerly.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And next is Councilmember Rick Morick.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Larry Covington to serve on the Milton Equestrian Committee. Larry is my current, current nominee, and he's actually served for four years, so I'd like to reappoint him.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Rick Morick's, member of the Milton Equestrian Committee, Larry Covington, for a second term.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Cokerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And next is Councilmember Paul Moore.
I'd like to nominate Susan Kimble to the Equestrian Community, Committee, I'm sorry, Committee. She and her husband Drew are raising their three children here in Milton. They've been a resident for the past five years. Susan is actually being reappointed to the Committee. She's served for a year previously. She represents the hunter and jumper community and has brought great ideas to the Committee in the past year and look forward to her continued service.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we accept Paul Moore's nomination of Susan Kimble to the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. And if those members that are here, I don't know that I see Larry, who's Larry?
He's not. He's going to be in on February the 10th, to be sworn in.
And if Susan's here... Makes it easy to Susan. If you guys would, ladies, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will faithfully perform the duties as a member
That I will faithfully perform the duties as a member
of the Milton Equestrian Committee
Of the Milton Equestrian Committee
of the city
Of the city
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof
as well as the Constitution
As well as the Constitution
and the laws of the state of Georgia
And the laws of the state of Georgia
and of the, and of the United States of America
And of the United States of America.
Okay. And if you guys notice, I always look down after I read, because I learned a long time ago, if you look at people in the eyes while they're trying to repeat it, it gets on my... College graduation ceremony. All right, Suti, if you'd call the next position or appointment.
Next item is consideration of a resolution, appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board by appointing a board member for District One, Post Two, District Two, Post Two, and District Three, Post Two. Agenda item number 20011.
So we'll also...
And Councilmember Carol Cokerly begins.
Good, thank you. Recently, with a vacancy on the Parks and Rec Board, I was introduced to Esteban Colina, who is a wonderful supporter and already engaged in our Parks and Recs. He has two children, one age 14 and one 9. Stays very busy, he's self-employed, travels quite a bit, but he has already shown great dedication to our effort and is willing to make this commitment, which I'm very appreciative. He's over there by Jim, so I nominate you, Esteban, to join us, please, on the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay. Do I have, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we accept Carol Cokerly's nomination of Esteban Colina to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Mor, uh, Longoria with a second from Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Suti, please call the next position.
Okay, that would be Councilmember Rick Morick.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Phil Cranmer to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Phil has served for the last four years, and we appreciate his dedication and contribution to Parks and Rec Board.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Phil Cranmer by Rick Morick.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Mor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And next is Councilmember Paul Moore.
Thank you, Ms., thank you. I'd like to appoint Joey Costanzo, reappoint him to the Parks and Rec Committee. He and his wife Kimberly are raising their two daughters, Reagan and Madison. They're both actively participating in the Milton sports programs. Joey has served us, I think, in excess of seven years and has served us well. He understands all of the Milton challenges that we face with active parks and has served us well, and will do a terrific job on this committee.
Okay. Open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept Joey Costanzo as Paul Moore's nomination to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Mor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. And if those members will step forward, we'll swear them in. Okay, if you guys will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will faithfully perform the duties of
That I will faithfully perform the duties of
the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member
of the city
Of the city
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
And I will support and defend the charter thereof
as well as the Constitution
As well as the Constitution
and the laws of the state of Georgia
And the laws of the state of Georgia
and of the United States of America
And the United States of America.
Okay, Suti, you would please call the next.
The next is a commission, consideration of a resolution, appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Planning Commission by appointing a board member for District One, Post Two, District Two, Post Two, and District Three, Post Two. This is agenda item number 20012. We did unanimously vote in earlier Zach Middlebrooks for the mayor's at-large appointee. So we move on to Councilmember Carol Cokerly.
Thank you for my final appointment tonight for, for Planning Commission. Mayor, I think this gentleman's been around serving the city as long as you. There are very few of you. And before that, Fred had a distinguished career in, in serving other municipalities. He's always been a mount service. So Fred, I am honored to ask you to nominate you to re-serve the, on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Fred Edwards to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley and a second, I believe, from Councilmember Mor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
Okay, next is Councilmember Rick Morick.
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, thanks Samit Shah for his service on the Planning Commission, and I'd like to nominate him for another four years as my appointee.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Samit Shah as Rick Morick's representative on the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, and I believe a second, I heard first from Councilmember Mor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
And next is Councilmember Paul Moore.
Thank you, Suti. I'd like to appoint Marty Locke to the Planning Commission. Marty and his wife Jane have lived in Milton for 15 years. Marty served on our very first original CPAC Committee. He's a member of our open road neighborhood community, not living in a subdivision. I think he'll represent the open road community well. He's a past member of the Alpharetta Planning Commission and served for several years. And he's also a member of the Fulton County Board of Ethics for the past 15 years. I think he will serve us well in the Planning Commission.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Marty Locke to the Planning Commission for Councilmember Paul Moore.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cokerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Suti. I think we, we have one left. I would have, um, my, actually, I believe we had already...
We already did.
We got mixed up, so I would have my BZA appointee now, so, sorry about that. Let me get my cheat sheet here. All right, I'd like to appoint Jake Ward as my BZA appointee. He's a local business leader and chief revenue officer at, at Ad Victorian Solutions, an Alpharetta-based information technology firm. Jake did live in Inman Park for several years and volunteered, and his wife Aubrey, him and his wife Aubrey decided to move to Milton and thought it was a perfect community to build a foundation and start their family. They're excited and, and committed to work with the city leaders to ensure Milton maintains the unique qualities that make residents and businesses proud to call Milton home. So, and the other thing I might add is, one night, my wife and I were out to dinner and overheard eavesdropping. The couple next to us started talking, and they mentioned they had moved to Milton, and they started talking about Milton, and I didn't say a word. Then when I heard them talk about what a great city Milton was, and they loved, loved the city and wanted to help out, I thought, what a great opportunity. So I'm excited to nominate Jake Ward. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Jake Ward to the Planning Commission on your behalf.
That would be to BZA.
I'm sorry.
There we got mixed up there.
Jake, Jake Ward to BZA, sorry, my bad.
I second that, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I got a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Cokerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And no more eavesdropping.
No more eavesdropping. I wasn't, wasn't really that... I didn't tell them I was the mayor. So is that all of our appointees now?
That is it.
So you guys, and I appreciate your patience. One thing I do want to say, just a sincere, from the council, myself, our city staff, and mainly our citizens, a thank you to you guys that not only have served and are serving, but also the new folks that have stepped up. As I always say, that's one of the things that makes Milton such a great place to live, is all of our citizens that are willing to give their time and efforts to better our city. So that's a sincere heartfelt thank you to you guys. And if everybody that's here tonight would, as a new appoint, as an appointee that serves on a board or commission, please join the council up front here. Oh, I do have to let me swear the, the last, the Planning Commission members in.
That's right. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Congratulations.
Hello, Hodge.
Good to see you, nice to see you.
Congratulations.
All right, if you guys will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully, faithfully perform the duties as a member of the Planning Commission of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. Thank you guys for stepping back out.
We're gonna have to get real close. I'm not gonna be able to get y'all here on the corner. Yeah, if y'all stay back up there. I'm not sure. I cannot get you all this way, so I'm gonna need you, maybe turn to your side, everyone. Exactly, perfect. Yep, Reed, you turn to your right, everyone on this side, turn to your left. There we go, you got it? Actually, sir, would you mind going to this side, please? Thank you. I think I can get you all now.
And don't be afraid to scoot that back.
I'm gonna.
Just don't fall.
Get up, all right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Brenda.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to interrupt for one second. I think there was a little bit of confusion just between your BZA and Planning Commission appointment, and I think we have the BZA appointment just now that Councilmember Bentley made for Jake Ward, but it sounds like there may have been just a misstatement when the motion was made for Zach Middlebrooks. I'd just ask if we could redo that one and just make a clarification that your prior motion was possibly misstated and that basically your, your motion is for it to be Zach Middlebrooks appointed as the mayor's designate for the Planning Commission, not for the BZA.
Yeah, that's who it was supposed to be, so I can't remember who made that.
Laura Bentley made it.
Make that motion, right?
Yeah, so Zach Middlebrooks is planning.
Planning Commission, correct.
So just to clear, okay, so for clarification, the motion I'd like to make is to, to approve the appointment of Zach Middlebrooks to the Planning Commission. the appointment of Zach Middlebrooks to the Planning Commission and not Jake Ward.
And not Jake Ward, yes. Okay. I think that can be your motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion to nominate Jake, Zach Middlebrooks, to the Planning Commission. And I got a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I apologize, that was listed opposite then, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was perfectly clear.
Thank you very much. All right, I appreciate everyone in the audience's patience for that. All right, Sudi, if you would please call the next, next item.
Next item is our consent agenda. First item is approval of the December 2nd, 2019 regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 20002. Next is approval of a professional services agreement binding between the City of Milton and Pond and Company, Inc., for engineering and design services. Agenda item number 2000.
You know what, Sudi, can I go back and clarify? I'm trying to look on the agenda where we had public comment.
That's, I think that's next.
Yeah, so can we go back to, yeah, we skipped public comment.
Okay.
We can. Give me just a second.
We have one general public comment.
Okay, hold on one second. You guys have to excuse me, this is my first meeting at Bren. All right, our next item is general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. And the city encourages you to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, to bring your comment card before the clerk, which you say, you've got your cards now, correct? Okay, so I'll open up for the first speaker.
So for general public comment, we have Gary Jablonsky.
My name's Gary Jablonsky, 2680 Grassview Drive, Milton. Congratulations to the newly elected councilman from District Two. Thank you. I had a long speech prepared, but I'll postpone that to another session. I'll be back. But I do want to have input on two topics. One, I believe the city should consider building its own or allocating some resources for recycling center. Many of the citizens in Milton probably go all the way down to the Roswell Recycling Center, and if you know that certain items are free for Roswell residents and not for Milton. So put that in your agenda for future meetings. Second, in my opinion, the board is a bit too aggressive on land acquisition. Seems every session I come to, you dive into that room over there to talk, in executive session, to talk about land acquisition. Now, maybe I haven't looked at all the documents necessary, but I don't see a big picture here. But we know, I know that you're talking about it, and you're spending money, and maybe you should either provide a more clear picture of what your long-term plan is, or reduce your land acquisition. You could save that money for some very hard-working public safety officials and for the Parks and Recreation Department. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any more general public comments here?
That's all, sir.
No close public comment.
And I'll just make a general statement. When the council and the mayor do move to executive session to discuss land acquisition, that could mean several different things. Sometimes it might be actually buying, purchasing some land with our green space dollars, but it, just for general information, a lot of times it might be for a $500 right-of-way item or something like that, or just a discussion on something. There may be, you know, five meetings to discuss one, one acquisition, so even though we do meet a lot, talking with that, under that topic, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're buying something new every time, so. But great comments.
Is there another public comment, Sudi?
Now, these were on the consent agenda, so we can go ahead and. Excuse me?
Okay, we, yeah, we don't allow on the consent agenda, if those are general public comment, I assume legally we can let that, you know, I'll be glad to open that back up if they're general public comment.
For general, yeah, since it's under consent.
If you could just change the.
I think you've got the right box. The first speaker is Michael Stafford.
I'm Michael Stafford. I live at 1450 Birmingham Road, and I want to comment on the Birmingham Road and Freemanville intersection that's being considered on the consent agenda. As y'all all know, the traffic is very bad in the morning and afternoon rush hours at that intersection. Accidents occur there frequently. Traffic backs up past our driveway every day between 4:30 and 6:00 in the afternoon. I am a proponent of roundabouts. I feel that that's the best alternative for that intersection. However, if the intersection at Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road is not addressed, also, the backup during the evening rush hour will back up, possibly even back into that Freemanville roundabout. I have reviewed the February 2015 Pond report based on data that was collected in 2014. Many of those findings I find remain true today, and many may have even worsened over that period of time since that report was drafted. However, some things have changed since 2014. The property on the southwest corner of Freemanville and Birmingham Road is now owned by the City of Milton and creates a unique opportunity to rethink the layout of the proposed roundabout. The property on the northeast corner has large specimen trees that would be impacted based on the current proposed location of that roundabout. The property on the northwest corner is a fenced horse pasture with no structures closed to the intersection, but is an active equestrian property. Why with these alternatives would the city force the homeowners on the southeast corner of the property to give up a large chunk of the southeast corner of their property? It would move the road closer to the historic home that they live in. It would affect the everyday usage of their private property. It would affect their privacy every day. Their access to their property would be effective. They own and pasture horses on their property. The only access they have for the use of their horse trailer is on Birmingham Road. In order to navigate the trailer onto their property, wide turns are required. With the way the roundabout is drawn now, it would be impossible for them to turn their horse trailer because of the concrete medians that would be directly in front of their driveway. So what does the city suggest they do? Get rid of their horses? Milton is a horse-friendly city. We just heard about the Equestrian Committee being appointed here. This should not be forced on this family. They shouldn't have to build a new access road or driveway onto their property, and if they were, who would pay for that? There is an historic courthouse on their property, right there adjacent to where their driveway is. There's existing horse pastures there that would have to be moved if they were to have to create a new driveway. There is a family that lives there on the southeast corner, and they're citizens of Milton. Their names are Brian Bush, Tamara DeJurgis, and their 11-year-old daughter Haley. They love their property, and they should not have to give up a big chunk of it for the sake of Cherokee County commuters. We need to take care of our citizens and put them first. There is an alternative here. Move the roundabout to the southwest of the property owned by, which is owned by the City of Milton. So if you look at that intersection to the southwest, there's 18 acres of property, I believe it is, that the City of Milton owns now. This would create an offset in the road, which would serve to further calm traffic flow. This would protect the property owned by citizens Brian and Tamara and their daughter Haley. This would allow Brian and Tamara unfettered access to their property. This would save the trees on the northeast corner of that intersection, and this would save the rural character of Milton that we all love. It is time to take a second look at the alternatives for this intersection, and I trust that this city council will take my commentary into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Andrea Bartels.
Hey, my name's Andrea Bartels. I live at 410 Saberwood Drive in Milton, and I didn't write anything down. I already wrote a lot. Y'all all got the email. I'm just here tonight to encourage you to please clarify things that are on the consent agenda when it comes to including documents that are out of date and incorrect, and Mike pretty much made all the points in his speech tonight that I made in my email to y'all. I would, I would bet there's gonna be strong support for shifting that roundabout to city-owned property, so I'm not gonna get into that. But I would like to say that it would probably be helpful for people to, to see a more updated version of that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Andrew Kimball.
Hello, I'm Andrew Kimball, 15800 Freemanville Road. I live two properties from where the roundabout's going in. I am very thankful for the roundabout. I do think it will slow down traffic, reduce accidents, increase the flow of traffic, so I'm very excited for it to come. But I too feel for the family who, of the four corners, is the only corner anywhere near that traffic circle. There seem like a lot of alternatives. I do understand that the drawing is a bit out of date. I think I just heard that, so maybe some of my points are moot, but they do have a child who sleeps already about 20 feet from the street. Moving that street closer to her bed is really gonna harm her. It might result in the loss of a pasture, which usually results in a loss of a pony. You can't have too many ponies on a pasture. It really does affect that corner way more than the other three, so I do hope when people go back to the next draft, they keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Tamara DeJurgis.
Hi, I'm Tamara DeJurgis. I live at 1425 Birmingham Road. I am the property that my neighbors have spoken about that's at the southeast corner of Freemanville and Birmingham Road. I've received some messages, and thank you for those of you that have reached out to me. Two of you have reached out. There are two, I'm sorry, this is, this has been really hard. This has been going on since at least 2013. So since 2013, I've had to live with a lot of uncertainty. I have a daughter who, all the time, every time this boils up, asks me, mommy, are we gonna lose our house? Am I gonna lose my pony? That's really hard. I never thought this would happen when I moved to Milton. I do agree that that intersection is a problem. I also, you know, have to tell my daughter every time I hear an accident at that intersection, which is frequently to go inside, because one of those will be a fatality. And there have been many overturned vehicles, and it's, it makes me nervous. But the bottom line is that this is my home. I have horses. The city logo has a horse on it. I hope it's not to chase horses out. This is also a historic property. I have a historic marker on my property. This moves the roundabout closer to my house. I will not be able to get in and out of either driveway easily. One is to my garage, and the other one is to the barn. You know, it's not like just choosing because they're not connected, so I will not be able to get my horse trailer in and out, and that's a safety issue for my horses. It's, the other issue is that those drawings are outdated, so I get notified by going through the 200 to 500 pages that are in that packet. That's my notification, and that's how I find out. So if I miss it, guess what everybody's going to point to? Well, it was in that packet, how come you didn't say anything? Well, you know, I got, I get to spend time going through all that because no one communicates with me. That's really hard. And it's hard that it's been going on for so long, and you're impacting two equestrian properties, you're impacting a property with specimen trees, and the city now owns the property on the southwest corner. So three of the four properties have had changes to the title, and the last thing, and I'm sorry, there's just a lot of points, and this is really hard, is that I will have a non-conforming lot. And so I will have, that's, I believe that's inverse condemnation, so that will also be another issue for me. So I really hope that you take, take consideration to what this is doing to residents and to the horses in this community when you do that, because you're impacting two horse farms right out the gate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, do we have any more public comment?
Our final speaker is Mr. Bill Lusk.
Good evening. My name's Bill Lusk. I reside at 1355 Summit Road in Fields Crossroads, Georgia. As most of you know from, or many of you know, I've been a great proponent of roundabouts in the city, and I was behind the city engineer from the very get-go in incorporating this intersection improvement in the city. And I'm pleased to see the results of them, both from a safety standpoint and a maintenance standpoint. But I'm here to talk on, obviously, the same topic tonight. While I was in, on council back in 2014, we, the city council, approved a contract with the Pond and Company, civil engineers, registered engineers in the state of Georgia, to produce an intersection improvement traffic study and concept report and design for both Freemanville at Providence and Freemanville at Birmingham Road. And in February of 2015, they produced this document, 250-some pages, the study of both of those intersections. And within this document, they also produced design drawings, concepts of both of these roundabouts. And the cost of that, that study was budgeted at $150,000. And through my presentation, I'll make some statements, and I'll also come up with several questions that I have for council and for staff regarding this topic tonight. This is the, and y'all have access to it, this is the plan for the roundabout at Birmingham Road. And essentially, the roundabout is centered on the center lines of both Freemanville Road and Birmingham Road. Now, as a civil engineer, I understand design concepts and guidelines and regulations, and they change over time. Subsequent to, and subsequent to that proposal, Pond and Company conducted a public, public information meeting, showing the concepts, presented, presented it to the public. They received comments and made some adjustments. Providence Road Roundabout came first. Birmingham Road was delayed for some reasons, budget reasons, I believe. So I learned when this agenda item came up tonight that there is a contract to be issued to BM and K to, and I'm sure you have all read it. It's a task order to provide pre-construction right-of-way acquisition services for Freemanville Road at Birmingham. Road at Birmingham Road. And the city issued this RFP way back in, I believe, April of this year, and took these responses sometime later this year with anticipated award of August of this year. Here it is, January of 2020. And within their response and their proposal, I believe it was sent out with the RFP, was a revised plan of the roundabout, totally adjusting the alignment and location of this roundabout to the east, minimizing the impact of the property on the northwest corner and minimizing the impact on the southwest corner, both of those properties being pastures. So it moved the property, or the roundabout, into the southeast corner, which had the greatest impact, encroaching in a one-acre residential site, thereby creating some other problems. So my, and I'll get into my questions. Why was the redesign necessary? Who initiated it? When was their contract approved? And I'm talking about Wolver, Wolverton, who did the redesign, redesigned the roundabout.
Five minutes has elapsed for this comment.
Why the change of engineers? Why didn't they go back to Pond and Company?
The council can like to add another minute or two if you want, or we can wrap this up. The council, okay? We'll add two minutes. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So the proposed contract with BM&amp;K contemplates acquiring property based on the enclosed revised I'm not sure when the public comments were, were made on this revised plan, if in fact there were any public comments. So as I said before, the revised design moves the roundabout east of Birmingham, creating an overbalance of property acquisition on the east side of Freemanville Road and a minimal on the west side of Freemanville Road. The revised design also reduces the size of the one-acre residential parcel on the southeast corner, thereby creating a non-conforming lot, as defined by Fulton County Health Department and by city codes. So what are the options there? Two more questions. You going to condemn the property if you go through with this revised design? Or do you make, make it an approved non-conforming use? I think in the interest of transparency, I'd like to see this issue revisited by your design team and come up with a new design that's less harmful to the property owners, not only on the southeast corner, but on this northeast corner. Let's do this right. Engineering is all about doing it right with the best available information at hand. There's enough property out there to relocate this roundabout. And I'd appreciate a review of it and take it back to the engineer's work belongs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's, is that all our public comment?
That's all, sir.
All right, we'll close up public comment. Before we hear our consent agenda, I got, I have a legal question too. And just want to make, if I can make some general, general comments, not specific to an item, but general to those types of items, if that makes sense. We've had some discussion with the council and all. When the city contracts with an engineer to look at some traffic improvements, basically we are contracting with that engineering firm to design that and to come up with a design. And that's a long process. The public's involved, the property owners are involved, they look at all different sorts of, of parameters, whether it's obviously safety and, and, and the, the most efficient way, cost, but also impact to neighbors, because that can be costly, and to, you know, other properties that may, don't have improvements there, that would be less expensive to, to move there. So in general, these kind of scenarios, what happens, it's, it's a long process. The engineers and our staff meet with the property owners. They look at all options that make, make, make sense for not only this, all the citizens and our, that use our roads, but also the properties and whatnot. So again, just in general, that, that is part of a, of a plan. And whenever we initiate an engineering study, there's no plan that's already set in stone that sometimes could just be a draft to, to kind of show where it is. But that's not set in stone. So anyways, I just kind of wanted to, wanted to clarify that, if that makes any sense. And I don't know if, if Steve, you've got anything you'd want to add to that. I do know in, in some, some cases that I myself have reached out to property owners, as well as I think some other council members, as well as our city manager, with clarifying the, the facts on that. So I just wanted to make sure that's on the record. Okay? All right, Sudi, if we can move on to our center agenda.
First item is approval of the December 2nd, 2019 regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 20002. Next is approval of a professional services agreement, buying between the city of Milton and Pond and Company, Inc., for engineering and design services. Agenda item number 20003. Next is approval of a right-of-way and field mowing agreement between the city of Milton and Ashford Gardeners, Inc., for mowing services. Next is approval of a task order to provide pre-construction and right-of-way acquisition services for Freemanville Road at Birmingham Road intersection improvements. This is agenda item number 20005. Our fifth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of change order number one to the construction services agreement between the city of Milton and CMEs, Inc., for the Northeast Crab Apple Connector Project. Agenda item number 20006.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items under reports and presentations. Our first presentation, so we'll move on to our public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please, Sudi, if you'll please call that item.
This item is an alcohol beverage license application. Consideration of issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Group Triple J LLC, doing business as Ichiban Steak and Sushi, 5306, One Word Parkway, Alpharetta, Georgia, 3004. Agenda item number 20007, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, mayor and council. Ichiban Steak and Sushi has gone under a change of ownership, and the new owner is applying for their alcohol beverage license. They are in compliance, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, are there any questions for Bernadette on that? Go ahead, Jeff.
Why does it say Alpharetta, Georgia?
Uh-oh.
Blame it on. Oh, okay. I was wondering if, because I'm having their, their alcohol licenses.
Seeing that for the first time, I apologize.
No, that's all right.
Sometimes some of the businesses still utilize Alpharetta. We make a manual change to the majority of them, and I will keep a close eye on those.
I'm guessing that was a cut and paste that, that didn't get caught by us.
That's a tough, that road, a lot of business doesn't know because one side's Alpharetta, one side's Milton, so.
We will keep an extra eye on those.
Sort of a zigzag pattern right there.
A lot of our software is auto change, and we have to manually make the change, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
Do we have any public comment on this?
No, we do not, sir.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Is there any other questions? And if I make a motion, you can always add in the motion to, to Governor's air.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve it, agenda item number 20007.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jamison, a second from Councilmember Moore. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, Sudi, we don't have any items on our zoning agenda. Will you please sound the first unfinished business item?
This item is consideration to amend the Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Ordinance to provide for a time extension on the ability to use the density-based tree conservation ordinance or the canopy-based tree conservation ordinance in the city code. Agenda item number 19271. First presentation was at the December 16th, 2019 council meeting. Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Today, I am here to request you to amend the Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Ordinance to provide extension on the ability to use either the density-based tree canopy conservation ordinance or the canopy-based conservation ordinance. As you know, we are working to revise our tree conservation ordinance. We do have a joint work session between the planning commission and the city council next week. That's on January 13th. But this will basically give an extension from a current date of January 20th, 2020 to July 31st, 2020. We are not expecting six more months. Hopefully, the city council will approve the new ordinance by next month. But this will give us some enough prefer time to revise ordinance.
Okay, are there any questions for Parag on this? Okay, we'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 19271.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parag. Okay, we'll move on to our next unfinished business item. Sudi, if you'll please call that item.
This is consideration of an ordinance to amend Article 2 of Chapter 36, Door-to-Door Salesman of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 19245. First presentation was at the November 18th, 2019 city council meeting. Mr. Steve Krokoff.
Good evening, mayor and council. I apologize, I wasn't prepared for that to be my name. The, so this is, this is what was brought before you several weeks ago, and it was...
Steve, you're the city manager. Put somebody else's name on it.
Too late. And this was a response to a challenge we had regarding our, our door-to-door ordinance. I have been back and forth with Ken and, and his office on this. I had some concerns regarding loosening up our, our ordinance too much in response to the, the challenge that, that had come forth. I believe that we have been able to satisfy any constitutional challenge that we would have had under the old ordinance while maintaining the level of, of protection that we need for our residents. And that's what is before you now. If you'll recall initially, I had, I was, it all was fine. We, everything that, that Ken's office had recommended changes, we're not going to negatively impact the city at all, except for the fingerprinting aspect of the background check. I believe that we've been able to overcome that through a background check without fingerprints, so we won't be unnecessarily putting our applicants through, through the fingerprinting process, but we will be able to do a background check nonetheless. So I think we've been able to kind of have our cake and eat it too on this one.
Okay. Any questions on this? Laura?
Yeah, I just have a question. So, I mean, the bad guys aren't going to come in and, and get a permit, most likely. So if they...
The dumb bad guys.
So, but this would allow a, a resident, and if we did have some sort of issue, they could, you know, request to see this permit. So is this a card that we issue and they carry when they go door-to, door-to-door? Or?
We do. We, we issue a, a permit, and we've done so. And when, I believe when our residents see this, they, they infer that there's been a thorough background check before someone's coming upon their property, which was always my concern. What, they'll still have that same badge, and we will be able to still do a thorough background check because the change that's going to be is they're going to have to still show a government identification, and we'll be able to run our background checks based on that. So when someone comes to your home, they're, they will have a city of Milton badge showing that they, that they have, they've been vetted. There are other, there are other, other methods that we could take. Door-to-door sales are not what they were 30 years ago, and, and people ringing a doorbell now is no longer received the way it was 30 years ago, and it's, it seems to be, it's a bit more of an intrusion in people's lives. And there are a lot of things we could do from a public education standpoint, like getting out the fact that if you post no solicitation at your home, people cannot ring your doorbell, except for those that are exempt from that, from that, political reasons, things along those lines that, that can still do it. So there are opportunities to even with the, even with this changed ordinance, for those that do not want to be bothered by, by salespeople, to be able to prevent that from happening. And where we see that a lot is with senior citizens and, and other, other, other community members that may just be more at risk.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that was my point, is that if, if someone does, is soliciting without a permit, it gives us the ability to, you know, a citizen can call, and we, we can have recourse as far as, you know, a, a police officer can ask this person to leave, or we can fine them, right? For a thousand, a thousand dollar fine.
Absolutely. It's a citable offense.
Okay.
And we've gotten, this, this is not new. We have received calls, and they have, and our officers do respond. Most of the times, we find out people just weren't aware of the, of the, of the requirement, or it ends up someone that was, that is exempt, like a, a student at one of our local high schools would be exempt from having to come in and, and, and get a, a permit for, you know, doing something for a sport or something along those lines. But we, this is nothing new to our police department. We could do some, some public education on this through our social media. I'll, we'll, we'll work on some of that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I'll open up for a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move, make motion that we approve agenda item 19245.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, a second from Councilmember Moore. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports. Before we get into reports, I'd like to introduce Mr. Greg Mattello, I believe I pronounced it right, as our new communications director. So we just want to welcome you on board here at the city of Milton. So, thank you very much. Anything council wants to report on? Okay, we'll move on to staff reports. Public works.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager. Welcome aboard, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you.
For December, the month of December, it wasn't an exciting month. Things were slow, so don't have a whole lot to report on. Some of the projects we were hoping would move forward, just didn't, as we expected. But the sidewalk repair project within Belterra and Brookshade and Bethany, I think, forgot the other one, Bethany Creek, thank you. That project now is substantially complete, and so we've moved through there and made all those repairs that we needed to do. The Charlotte extension at Mayfield is obviously progressing quite well. We should see some progress, and they should be substantially completed by the end of March, early April, something like that. So we're very excited to see that come about. I am excited about 2020, the year coming forward here. We've got a lot of exciting projects will be coming in front of you very soon. So be, giving you more reports. For the public works operations, just as I typically do, we had 108 work orders for the month of December. And the largest report we had, work order we had, again, was dead animals. We had 35 dead animals in the month of December. One of those was a very large fish. I've got pictures if you need. We had 20 sign issues, 15 potholes, edge of pavement issues, nine tree issues, nine trash debris removals, three stormwater issues, and two traffic signals. And we responded to two after-hour callouts for car crashes. Any questions?
Rick?
I just got a comment. I just want to thank you, Robert, and also Matt, and your staff.
I just wanted to thank you, Robert, and also Matt and your staff for the sidewalk project within Belter. Our sub is like 20, and I live in Belter, we have like 27 years old. You guys did a phenomenal job on actually working with the community when people called with concerns, and I walk, walk those sidewalks, and we know, we have no more trip hazards, so I just want to say thank you very much. Thanks for your patience as people contacted the city, but I just want to commend you and your staff. You did a great job on that.
Particularly Matt Foster.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come on down. Fire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. Councilmember Moore, welcome aboard and congratulations. As we're excited about the 2020 year coming up here with our awards banquet in February and our new facility moving along nicely on Highway 9, I wanted to share with you a snapshot of 2019. The, all these figures are from January through the end of this year, and this is our activity summary, which basically lays out our hydrants, how many hydrants we actually touched, our incidents, our inspections, scheduling, pre-plans, and investigations. And you can see a large portion of our work is between our incidents and some of our hydrant management that we do each year, so. And if I go too fast, you want to see something, please.
I would say there's not anything on the screen.
Uh-oh. Mr. David.
There we go.
Oh, lost it.
Maybe not.
See it?
Nope.
There you go. Sorry about that. So again, you can see hydrants and our incidents that we respond to, and all takes up a good percentage of our time, and then it's broken down there, from there. And if that's okay, I'll go ahead and move on to the next one. Here's a breakdown of our incident types that we respond to, and you can see a major portion of what we do, just over 42%, is EMS in the city and what we do there. And then the other large portion is the good intent calls, which basically are the calls that will go out and do a citizen assist, somehow help the community in, in some way or another. It may not fall into a specific category, so we put it as a good intent, and we go out and do whatever we can to assist the community. So we, we get quite a few of those types of calls. And then you can see the other ones are our service calls. Those are types of trees down, wires down, those kind of, those types of incidents, so. And if we're good, I'll move on to the next. There we go, sorry. And this breaks down our stations, how our call volume is, impacts each station, and you can see here, Station 42 has the highest percentage of calls. And then from there, it falls into Station 41, and then you'll see truck, or Station 81, which is our truck, that's in the Alpharetta Station in, in Alpharetta there. And then you can see the other breakdowns from the other stations, which is interesting because when I show you our heat map, which supports why we're putting a fire station on Highway 9, you can see where our call volume is. It's basically in that Highway 9 area, which is where Station 42 responds to. That's their first response or their first due territory is sta, is that Highway 9 area. So with that new station coming online, you'll see, you'll see that break up a little bit, and 42 won't have that. You'll then see Station 44 with the higher call volume. Yes, sir?
So the brighter red areas are the higher call origination?
The concentration of calls, correct. Yes. And a lot of that has to do with some of our adult living facilities that we have on that Highway 9 corridor.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Our call volume has gone up about 14% with those two facilities, so. And then you can see Station 41, and some of those numbers, you'll see that actually go a little bit higher in this next year as our Roswell agreement tends to, our call volumes, and have more time in that automatic aid agreement with Roswell, that, that will go up as well, so. And here, it's basically a snapshot of property loss due to fires. And we had a, a tough month in, in May, as you can see, and that, that basically goes directly related to the five acres fire that we had, and then they also the building fire we had on Mountain Road. So those were the higher dollar values, and then some of the other smaller ones, they tend to add up a little bit, but you, you can see that we, we've got just over $2 million in property loss due to fires. And here shows a five-year incident totals from where our call volume has gone up over the past five years, and we've seen a 7% increase in calls just in this past year over from 2000, from 2019 and 18, and then a 26% increase in call volume over the five-year period. So you can see that broken down there as well. And I think this one here, oh, and this is our newsletter I wanted to share with you all that we send out to our, our members, and we kind of put in there some goals for the, for the coming year, what we, what we hope to accomplish and have some of their input in, into this as well, but, and then our pancake breakfast with our 80 pounds of bacon that we cooked, and.
Was that you on the top picture there, Chief?
Yes, yes.
The city manager.
So, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, so.
Any questions for Chief Joe?
The chief on the previous, on the five-year incident?
Yes, sir.
So that's an oddly linear growth pattern. Do, are we, let me put it this way, have you seen any changes in the types of calls that we're responding to? Because I'm assuming that that, those are just all calls put into a big bucket, right?
Correct. That's a, a concentration of all the calls. It's not broken down. I can break it down further for you, as in one of those.
No, I mean, is there some kind of outlier, something that we're seeing more of now than we were before? Because I'm thinking this is largely driven by population increases.
Absolutely. It's, it's population and our EMS calls have grown, and basically goes back to those adult living facilities that we have, and then some of our automatic aid agreements, such as Roswell, we're going to see. We saw a small increase just in the last month that we've had that agreement in place, and I expect to see that grow even further, because they have facilities right in that first due territory where we're now a partner with them.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor, before we close, chief, I missed a couple of meetings. Did we ever brief the council on that horse save?
No, I did not. There was a little bit of a twist to that, that particular event, but we did have a, a horse off of Birmingham Highway that was in a pond, and basically what we learned is that the horse had a, for better, a coat or a blanket on him, and got so warm that it seeked someplace to cool off, it went into the water and ended up getting stuck and could not get out of the mud. And our crew, they did an excellent job, and they spent three hours extricating that horse from that pond. Our, our folks, we have dry suits that we, we have on part of our T-layer team, and they can actually get in that water and not suffer from hypothermia or anything like that. And they were able to extricate that horse, and after a three-hour event, and the horse, my understanding is doing well, and we had a vet on scene as well, so it went well. It really did. It was a great outcome, and some of those don't end as well, as I guess some of our horse owners may know. But it was, it was a, a great event. The guys did a really good job, so.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody in council or staff? If not, I'll open for a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, and thank you. Paul, welcome to, to council.
Good to be here. Paul.
If needed.
Where are we on the?
I got totally screwed up.
Be scheduled. God bless. I'll find out where we are.